Good evening. I'm calling this meeting Thursday, April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two of the Tacoma Public School Board of Directors to order. Would everyone please rise and do the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and sociopolitical realities. General Counsel Renee Trubled, will you please call the roll?
Yes, good evening. President Vonbright.
Here.
Vice President Keating.
Here.
Director Strosher.
Here.
Director McElroy.
Here.
We have a quorum. And I'm not sure if we have any of our student representatives here tonight.
All right. Moving on to item number six, five, adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt the agenda.
I second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any comments or adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Only opposed? We have an agenda. All right. Item six, recognition of staff, students, and community. Six point one, civic observances.
The district's general counsel recommends that the board of directors recognize the following state or federal civic observances that directly align with the district's strategic plan. And we'd like to honor, as RCW one point sixteen, point oh five oh seven oh acknowledges April tenth as Dolores Huerta Day. And Ms. Huerta was significant, along with Cesar Chavez, in the civil rights movement and formation of the United Farm Workers. And we are appreciative for her contributions to the labor movement.
Right, thank you. And I was actually gonna just make a comment about, you know, that we, these two months in a row, I think last month, we did Cesar Chavez. And it's really important, I think, to think through, you know, these people that changed the way we think about the people in our community and the way we interact and what we depend on for our livelihoods and how that all works. And so I have, we are gonna hear from Director McElroy. She is going to provide a prayer for us today.
Yeah, so Cesar Chavez wrote a prayer for the farmworker's struggle. And this prayer, it transcends. So I thought it was really important that we use his words and the work that he did with Dolores Huerta and recognize that. He says, "Show me the suffering of the most miserable, so I will know my people's plight. Free me to pray for others, so you are present, for you are present in every person. Help me take responsibility for my own life, so that I can be free at last. Grant me the courage to serve others, for in service there is true life. Give me honesty and patience, so that I can work with other workers. Bring forth song and celebration, so that the spirit will be alive among us. Let the spirit flourish and grow, so that we will never tire of the struggle. Let us remember for those who have died for justice, so they have given us life. Help us love each, help us love even those who hate us, so we can change the world. Amen."
Thank you for sharing them. All right.
I just would like to add, I've actually had the privilege of listening to Dolores Huerta several times give just public speeches. And I had the immense privilege of being able to meet her with my daughter and actually have a one-on-one conversation. And it's really humbling that we, that to even have the opportunity that she's, to even be able to meet people that have so significantly impacted the lives of people.
Awesome, all right. Six point two, recognition of the district's newest national certified teachers and recently renewed board-certified teachers.
Thank you, good evening. Our national board-certificated teachers this year, I just want to first shout out, not only is this a huge challenge to do on a regular year, but these folks actually submitted during pandemic. And so when we think about the landscape at which we were teaching, it was not a traditional setup. And so the amount of adjustments and changes and whatabouts on top of any other anxiety that the last couple of years have kind of brought. So this is a special crew of rock stars. The national board certificate doesn't replace the state, it's actually compliments that piece. These folks volunteered to do this, to take on this extra chance to reach our students, to test their practice, test themselves, to see what they could kind of lead and do. The national board certificate is built upon national board standards and five core propositions, which include teachers are committed to students and their learning, teachers know their subjects, they teach and how they teach those subjects, teachers are responsible for managing and monitoring student learning, teachers think systemically about their practice and learn from experience, teachers are members of learning communities. This process to certify is performance-based, it's evaluated using multiple metrics, a lot of writing, a lot of reflecting, videotaping, having other people come in and critique you, people come in and critique what you've written and submitted. It's an ongoing, this can take a couple, three years. It's not something they just woke up on September and decided by December they'd be ready to rock and roll. Folks sometimes put this off, and these folks again chose to continue that. We also have a lot of folks out there that are currently in that journey, so a shout out for them taking that challenge as well. However, tonight, we do recognize that in Tacoma Public Schools, we have two hundred and forty-two teachers that are nationally board-certified. And this year, we want to honor and welcome eleven newly certified teachers to the ranks. And tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing these educators. Please come forward, no pressure. As I call your name and read the list, so again, these are our eleven newly certified national board teachers. Francesca Basilia, Kelly Crawford, Sarah Lane, Natalie Reska, Megan Douglas, Joni Harris. And then I got just an updated attendance list, so did I miss anybody new here? Look at that, we are on track, nice. Then, we have a number of folks that weren't able to make it tonight, but are also part of our new group. Molly Higgins, Jessica Koho, Teresa Dixon, Yvonne Overfield, and Jennifer Taylor. However, new, and as awesome as new is, nice work, we have some people brave enough, crazy enough, willing, again, volunteered to renew, to not just do it once, but do it twice, maybe some might even be on their third. And we have twenty teachers that elected to renew their national board certificate. And would you please come forward as I call your name? Catherine Culver, Tracy Frank, Sheree Holbert, Katie Kuravakel, Robert McPartlin, Lisa Metcalf, TJ Purdy, Hillary Spear, Karen Jaskar, Lilia Petraschka. Anybody else show up? Awesome. So, a round of applause for these folks and their work. Yes, we're gonna follow you all the way across stage.
We're gonna applaud the whole time. Well done. Thank you. Oh, absolutely. Thanks for what you do.
And again, as we have supported this process, I did find out a tidbit of information this morning that our great, passionate leader Rita Chodri is one of the first folks to kind of bring national boards to Tacoma, which been about twenty, maybe twenty-one years ago. So this has really had great momentum for us, a lot of support, curriculum instruction, puts them in cohorts, gives them support as they get ready to prep and go through the process, so thank you tonight for that.
Thanks, Zeke, and thanks to the group that's now, I'm assuming, going out to party. Congratulations, everyone. Thanks, thanks for all the hard work you do. Item number seven, superintendent report. Seven point one, legislative wrap-up.
Good night, or good evening, good night. It was a good night. Good evening, Board of Directors. It is springtime, although it would be hard to tell, as I was covered in snow walking through town today and is there. So we're excited, I want to just take a moment before we bring up our guest to thank all of the staff and our families. I'm grateful that everyone had a chance to take a little bit of a breath over spring break, but recognize that that breath was short. We are in our final stretch of the twenty-two school year. It's hard to imagine. I think it's exciting, there's a lot of exciting times ahead of us this spring with celebrations and a lot of hard work still left ahead. So I'm just wishing everyone an amazing spring and deeply grateful for everyone that's leaning in, our families, our community partners, and all of our staff to support us to get through there. So with that, Director Keating and myself, who work with our legislative affairs consultant, Mr. Charles Brown from Cascade Government Affairs, have asked Mr. Brown to give you a high-level summary tonight of some of the highlights, knowing that we could spend days going through the debriefing of the legislative session. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Brown, and Mr. Brown will take us through some of those highlights.
Well, thank you very much, Superintendent Garcia, and members of the board, I am Charlie Brown. And I want to thank you first and foremost for trusting me to represent you in Olympia. It truly is an honor, and it means a lot to me to be able to represent Tacoma School District, the city in which I live, down there in Olympia, and the work that you all do and everybody does, and those teachers do every day, is what really makes our society and our town, but our society in general, such a great place to live. And so, thank you for that. I will say that I believe we had just a terrific legislative year in education this year. Overall, for education, there was an increase in funding by about a billion dollars in this legislative session. And a lot of that went into enrollment stability to help the school districts as they move through the, what we all hope is the waning days of this pandemic, helping to you, the school district, to maintain your staffing so that when things get back to normal, you've got the supports there. And I know that there's going to be additional need certainly for supports for the students, because this has been a traumatic time for all of the students. And the work that the teachers and the classified staff and your administrative school building staff do is just tremendous. And that enrollment stability was incredibly important. I'd say that that was kind of the number one issue in, on the minds of all the school districts. And I believe certainly here, of the two hundred and eighty-one million, about eight and a half million goes to the Tacoma School District. So that's a pretty big deal, right, for you guys to be able to manage through the rest of this year? We also saw some rebasing of the inflation for your school staff. And so that number is pretty good from the state for support for the, for the school districts all the way around. And then on the support for, for additional staff, which is really, this is new money. This is, this is additional new money that will go into the future for additional, for supports like student counselors and student nurses and a lot of your classified staff. And there's another several hundred million in, in that arena. So just overall, the one hundred and forty-five million. So overall, the, the numbers that went into school education this year, I just, I have to applaud the legislature. And it was a bipartisan effort, there are a number of members on both sides of the aisle who understand that putting a lot more money into the prototypical school model is so critically important, because we need to keep up with the changing landscape in education, we need to keep up with the needs of our students across the state. And quite frankly, we're just a growing state, I mean, what a blessing that is, right? And we're a growing state, and to be able to invest in more into that. So I kind of went back and I looked a little bit at our Tacoma Public Schools legislative agenda that we had adopted back in two thousand and twenty-two, and which is, you know, quite frankly, an agenda that a lot of the other school districts tend to follow, you know, when we all set these agendas together, we all get together and we're working together on things. And we, we succeeded in so many ways, student enrollment funding, we succeeded in some additional funding for student transportation. I will tell you, Director Keating, we're going to have more conversations about student transportation funding as we go forward. I was on the phone this morning with Superintendent Chris Reichdahl. And Superintendent Reichdahl is saying that we need to go in and just do the student transportation funding formula correctly. We didn't get all the way in the policy document, but that's okay, because we still have opportunities in this next legislative session to do that. We made big gains this year in the prototypical school funding mandate. And I would argue that although we didn't get quite the gains in the extended learning services and support for a student, a whole child, we got some of that stuff, there's some outdoor learning money, there's some other areas where legislators felt that there was priorities, and they were able to invest in that. So, you know, of the critical district issues, I would argue that we did very, very well. And I'm really pleased with that. Issues of high concern, we got some additional funding for special ed funding. And I think, again, Director Keating, we're gonna want to have a conversation with all of the staff and everyone about special education. I don't think that the legislature is going to do a, another enrollment stabilization bill. I can tell you that they aren't gonna do it, they actually wrote it into the language of the bill that they passed. But they do have a very strong interest in going in and finding out where the state is short on funding for school districts. And they agree that special education is one of those areas where they are short, and so they want to start working on issues like that. So I think special education is gonna come up as one of our issues that we'll want to talk about along with transportation. I think that what I'm most excited about, because this is near and dear to my heart, is opportunities for skills center and developing CTE. And, and I don't know why it's so near and dear to my heart, but it just is, darn it, so that's where we go. You all wanted to go out and, and try and put together a maritime skill center, and you asked the legislature for funding to start that development process. And every one of the members of the Pierce County delegation of the, in the legislature, got on board, made it a Pierce County priority, and they offered, they allocated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the district to start that process of moving forward on a skill center. It's not so much the fact that they allocated some money for you all to start doing the research on this, it's the fact that every one of them got on board and said, "This is something we really want to do." And I just think that that, our opportunities to work, to take the lead, leadership position for Tacoma Public Schools, but also to work with our other sister school districts, our adjacent school districts all around the county, and do something great that gets kids jobs right down here in the port of Tacoma and keeps our kids here and does really good things for long-term growth of these kids. I mean, that to me is just a heck of a lot of fun. So I guess I'll kind of leave it there. I gave all of you a, I gave all of you a document that I had sent out just right after the legislative session had ended. I can't believe it's only been a month since that legislature ended, it seems like quite a, quite a bit of time has passed. But overall, the district did very well, education in general did very well. And I just want to thank all of you for the leadership and your time that you give here at the Tacoma Public Schools, because honestly, a lot of legislators, a lot of the policymakers in Olympia, look to Tacoma Public Schools, the work that you've done, the great work you've done. And, and they say, "Is it good for Tacoma?" And when I say, "Yeah, I think that's good for Tacoma," it generally gets done. So that's a real testament to all of you, so I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Charlie. Well, before, I'll turn it over to Vice President Keating, but before I do, I want to personally thank you and your team for all the hard work and guidance and wisdom that you provide for us. And it is a twenty-four-seven job from before session starts till, as you can see, after session is over. So, and I know that you are, that Tacoma Public Schools are near and dear to your heart, and it shows. And I hear it from fellow electeds and from, in the legislature. And so I want to thank you, because I know when you're down there speaking for us, it's, it means something to you and it means something to them. So Vice President Keating is...
I just wanted to see if there were any, if anybody had any questions. Okay. I mean, you broke it down really well, Charlie, so. Yeah, I want to say that the advocacy that you did for us, particularly this session, like it was a team effort, and we really rely on you heavily. And when you say, "I need you there," like we're, if one of us can't, we're gonna find somebody to be there. And so I think that your ability to understand the landscape of the session and, and, you know, where, where to push a little bit harder, where to just step back a little bit, has been really educational for me in terms of learning how to more sophisticatedly, is that a word? I'm not sure that's a word, I might have made that up. But it's, it's helped me be more strategic and sophisticated in understanding legislative advocacy. So I feel very grateful to get to work with you. So I'm very, very thankful for everything that you've put together for us, and you help us look real good, so thanks.
It's pretty easy, actually. You guys do the real work.
So anybody have any questions for Charlie? And I'm sure we'll be seeing you again in the not-too-distant future with another for next year's legislative agendas.
I hope so.
Yes, absolutely. And I also want to take the opportunity on behalf of my colleagues and I to thank Vice President Keating for all the hard work that she does as our legislative representative, both to WADA, as well as working with Mr. Brown and his team down in Olympia, and also at the national level. So it has, it has been, one of the best things we ever decided to do is vote her in in that, that role. So thank you for all the hard work, it is a lot of work, so we all appreciate you.
Thank you.
So round of applause, I'd say, for all the great work.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Charlie.
Madam President, I just have one more comment under the superintendent's report. On behalf of the staff of the Tacoma Public Schools, happy birthday.
Oh. Thank you, thank you very much. There's no place I'd rather be than right here on my birthday, so.
You all heard that, right, for next year? You gotta align the calendar?
Geez. All right, moving on. Item number eight, staff report to the board, we do not have one tonight. Item number nine, members of the public wishing to address the board. We have an all, the protocols are the school board members, and are encouraged to have public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting. The superintendent, Orie Designe, will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at a meeting, you may also send an email to the board at board@toma.wad.ktwelve.wa, to coma.ktwelve.wad.us. Please contact the board office in advance of the meeting for disability accommodations. So option one is in-person here at the open meeting. And the, and if you have signed up, the general counsel will call your name when it's your turn to address the board. Please speak into the microphone. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there are a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion. And option number two is written comments, and as far as I can tell, we have no written comments this evening. So back to option number one.
Yes, thank you, we do have two speakers who've signed up. The first one is Sharnay Green Ross, and the subject is Stewart Middle School.
Hi. I don't know if you guys know what's been going on at Stewart, as far as a couple of the protests the kids had, as far as anti-bullying and also advocating for students of suicide. I have a couple of issues. One, I know it's hard to talk about, is race. I've had specifically a teacher tell my child that a Caucasian student using the N-word was just him using his white privilege. And that kind of hit home. Growing up, I've never had to deal with this sort of thing, and being a mother of color and having biracial children as well as children that are strictly of color, it's kind of hard to explain to my child that that's not okay. I have also met with the principal, I've sat down with the vice principal many a times, I've sat down with the dean of students. I have another child that I have been going to Stewart since October, because she is being bullied, she's been threatened to be jumped. Just Friday, when they had their choose-a-thon before spring break happened, she was threatened to be beat up by a number of girls. She wrote a list down of the girls who wanted to fight her. At no time did anyone from the school contact me. I am still waiting to hear from someone about what happened. I have went up there teaching my children. When you have a problem, you talk to somebody, you tell someone. Not all children are raised in that manner, but mine are. And I feel like my child's pleas are falling on deaf ears, because I also have a Caucasian niece. She was bullied, one day, her issue was solved. Her mother went up to the school, spoke, it was taken care of. I, on the other hand, have been going up to the school since October. And my child is in counseling, because she has self-esteem issues, she have, has things that's going on. And they are not being taken care of, she has expressed that she is not being heard at school, she is not being listened to. And at this point, I just kind of want to be put on the record that it's not just my daughter, there are children who can't go to their parents, and being that I worked at an elementary school, I have a lot of students tell me, staff is not listening to them, they're telling them, solve their problems themselves. Personally, me, I have three children at the school. My fourteen-year-old is very intelligent, if she has an issue, she lets staff know, hey, you can call my mom, she'll come, she'll talk. The principal has refused to call me on multiple occasions. It's just, it's getting to the point where it's hard to advocate for my, especially my one child that's being bullied and going up there and trying to stay calm and trying to remain respectful when, like I keep bringing this issue, but it's not being solved, and coming and even saying, "I have a Caucasian niece, how is her problem solved?" But I'm still coming to you, months later, and my child, her grades are failing now, she's saying she doesn't want to be at the school.
Thank you so much for sharing, I appreciate you taking the time. Superintendent, would you please?
Dr. Nolan.
Make sure, Dr. Nolan, would you follow up, please? Thank you.
Thank you, and our next speaker is Judy Zerzan Thule, regarding daughter in Lowell Elementary.
Hello. I'm here today to make you aware of concerns at Lowell Elementary that sadly are pretty similar to what the last speaker just told you. In February, we filed a harassment, intimidation, and bullying complaint surrounding events perpetrated by two boys on our fourth-grade daughter who was black. Some examples of the incidents include notes that read, "Kick me and shoot me, I'm stupid," put on the back of her chair, a violent picture drawn of our daughter dead, fingers pointed as guns with shooting noises, and verbal assaults such as, "White is better than black, go to another town, and you are my slave." The principal met with the boy's parents but did not inform us that this bullying and harassment was reported, even though our daughter, another student, and the other student's parents told Lowell's principal about these instances. After our formal complaint, the district investigated. While they did not find evidence to support our complaint, they did find there was evidence of violent behaviors, actions, and notes by the boys. Additionally, the district found Lowell was not compliant with social-emotional learning requirements or racial justice activities. We appealed our complaint due to inconsistent implementation of the safety plan by Lowell's administration, resulting in continued bullying and harassment of our daughter. The district has responded appropriately, helped improve our daughter's safety plan, and noted they were unaware Lowell was not following district expectations. We appreciate those at the district level who are initiating and supporting this work at Lowell. I am here because my wife and I strongly believe the school board should have knowledge about the ongoing cultural insensitivity, poor communication with families, lack of follow-through regarding behavior issues, lack of follow-through regarding behavior issues, and marginalization of the non-dominant culture supported by the principal at Lowell. As an example, when our sixth grader learned what was happening, he told us that nothing would ever happen at Lowell, and complaining about bullying didn't help. He stated, "The principal talks to kids. They keep doing it, and nothing changes." When we asked him what would happen at Mason, his current school, he immediately listed three adults who would listen to his concerns and address them. As another example, our daughter is doing a grade play about Lewis and Clark where some children are cast as Native Americans and need costumes. This is disrespectful to the indigenous people whose land we live on. We're concerned there has been too much of a focus on the specific situation, and this misses the larger picture of an environment that allows hostile acts and racism to thrive. There needs to be a proactive stance to change the climate at Lowell, and it sounds like other schools as well. We feel confident, based on the district's commitment, that training will happen this year, but are concerned this won't continue in future years. Part of Lowell's response to this incident has told to us by our two children is that the principal went into classrooms and told the class they would be suspended for bullying. Threatening suspension is not an appropriate response. We've seen multiple ongoing microaggressions that occur at Lowell when you are not part of the dominant culture. We know that parents and students are not heard by the principal when concerns are raised. We want to collaborate to improve the situation at Lowell and make it a welcoming and supportive place for all students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming and sharing. And Superintendent, would you please work with this, with Judy to make this-
We'll follow up. I believe we have your contact information.
Okay. Item number 10, consent agenda.
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Anyone have any comments or issues on the consent agenda? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero. Item number 11, policy matters. All right, we have 11.1, second reading of policy 3224, student uniforms and student dress codes. General counsel?
Yes, General Counsel recovers that the Board of Directors adopt the proposed revised policy 3224.
Right.
I move to adopt.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. And I'm opening up for comments or questions on this, and/or actually, would you, I know we talked about this last week in first reading, and so I, since first reading, we have actually, this is, this item has gone to the Equity Policy Review Team who gave some fantastic input, and actually, the superintendent joined us for that meeting and walked through some of the components of that. And I didn't know if Superintendent, you were, or the council, True Blood, would like to add anything to what-
Well, it was great to have Superintendent Garcia at the Equity Policy Review Team meeting. And I thought, what was great is that I, I didn't realize before working with Superintendent Garcia on this policy that he had a group with students that were regularly advising him. And so I think that's really the most interesting thing about this policy revision is that the majority of these revisions are coming from students. So, if you want to share more about that.
I think you guys have captured it and are grateful for the students. And then we also had a group of staff members come up from around the district that gave insights and reaffirmed that our kids were on the right track. I think what's really important about this is, is that it, it requires us as individual schools to revisit the practice on a regular basis, and it requires us to have restorative conversations when there is a situation that needs to be addressed. And so, I, I'm hoping that you guys, as Board of Directors, will move forward with your approval tonight. And if not, I know that we will keep working at it to make it better.
So, my comment on this was at the last meeting, there was specific wording that was related to gang apparel and gang signs and things like that. As a black child who grew up on the north end of town, like our former parent just spoke of, being dress-coded for gang-related things when you're black and there's no gang affiliation to you or your personhood, it can become demoralizing. And I really appreciate the students, the Equity Review Team, the parents, superintendent, and all who were involved in revisiting this policy and making it equitable by talking about those who promote violence. It's much different than just saying, "You look like a gang member." So, it takes away that racial profiling that often happens, especially on the north end of town. So, I'm very appreciative of this policy revision, and that's why I moved to adopt it.
Thank you. Director Stroger, do you have any comments? Director D? And I'd just like to say, for those that don't have it in front of them, the purpose of the, this is the uniforms and student dress codes, and the purpose is provide, is to preserve a beneficial learning environment and assuring the safe and well-being of all students is the primary concern and key priority of the supportive directors. The district intends to balance these priorities while also supporting students' individualities, self-expression, identity, religion, and culture through the students' choice of dress, appearance, and hairstyle. And we go on to talk about, you know, the, in this, what happens with schools that have uniforms versus those that don't. And it's very thorough, and I have to say, I'm very impressed with the student input. And it was thoughtful, and, and their self-advocacy was impressive. So, thank you for that. So, any other comments before we vote? All right, I call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero. All right. Financial reports, item 12. The district's next quarterly financial report is planned for May 2022. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district's website at https://www.tacomaschools.org/departments/businessandfinance. Item number 13, curriculum and instruction. This evening, we have no items for curriculum instruction. Item 14, business matters. 14.1, approval to award Wayne's Roofing for Stadium High School Gym Roof Replacement Project.
We've allocated roughly $20 million in the 2020 bond to address roofing concerns across the district. This is one of many roof replacements that are going to occur over the next four to five years. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent or designee award to Wayne Roofing Gym Roof Replacement. The total award amount is $600,000 excluding tax.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item 14.1.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any questions or concerns? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four to zero. Item 14.2, approval to negotiate an award design-build alternative method contract with Sanska USA Building, Inc. for Bryant Montessori K8 School Replacement Project.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the superintendent to negotiate and award a contract to Sanska USA Building, INC. for design-build alternative method for Bryant Montessori K8 School Replacement Project.
Okay, we have a motion?
I move to adopt.
Okay, moved and-
Second.
Seconded. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Item number 15, other business. There is none tonight, and so we are moving on to board comments and reports. And have we, do any of the student reps have shown up? So, who wants to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay. Director McElroy.
I'm just grateful to be here every day. This is my first year on the board. I haven't even made it like six months, and you guys sent me down to San Diego, and I went to the National School Board Conference. And, yeah, okay, whirlwind for me. I don't really leave the state often. But I would say that it was really nice to meet other school board directors from all over the nation. We deal with similar issues. We are all going through this together. We're all trying to do what's best for children. So, it was nice to find community and people who don't look like me, who don't serve the same demographics, who aren't in the same state, and just understanding that we all have a heart for children, and it brought my work more meaning. So, I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve. And that's my board report.
Well, it was a pleasure traveling with you and, and in, in learning with you. It was a wonderful learning environment. Vice President Keating and, and I and Director McElroy went with Superintendent Garcia, and we actually had a, we presented and, on our Whole Child Initiative, and had a great reception, was well-attended, lots of great questions, and so grateful that the superintendent was there because he, most of the questions were about implementation. So, that was great. He did a great job. And so, we actually had some bonding time, too. So, that was fabulous. So, Director Stroger, do you have a report?
Yeah, I'll go. So, this, we, last week had our JMAC meet for the month.
Yes.
Yeah, I should have left it out. Just, no, I'm kidding. We had a presentation from Kerry Wilheim from the City of Tacoma regarding Vision Zero, which is a, City of Tacoma's goal to eliminate traffic fatalities and serious injuries by 2035. It offers JMAC Partners a model for creating and supporting similar policies to improve community transportation and safety, which is huge, right? A lot of times, we, we got the accident report that they put up on the screen and where it showed, you know, fatalities in, in school zones, in the city in general, and it's like, fam, we got to slow down. So, it's, it's good to see that, you know, organizations, the JMAC organizations are working together to see how we can support that work because it's important. It impacts our kids, and we want our kids to be safe. So, that was a great presentation. Outside of that, we are still working to figure out our way forward. We are tapping into individual resources, figuring out how we can work together to support the mission of JMAC, and then let the community know what JMAC is doing and the work that we're doing. But we got to find a way to put that in, in layman's terms, right? We can't speak in, you know, you know, topics that only we know. We have to put that in a way that the community will understand it. Because a lot of work is happening. We have to find a way to communicate that out. So, that work is happening and going to continue as we move forward. Moving on from JMAC, I hope you guys are happy. I gave a JMAC report.
Thank you, thank you.
You'll get a gold star.
Yeah, I need that.
Totally.
I need that. The TPS hiring event at People's Community Center, I was able to pop in there. I couldn't find a parking spot, so let's start there. Couldn't really find standing room in the gym. We can also start there. There was a lot of students, a lot of vendors that were ready to hire our young people. Saw people in tie. There were a couple of kids where I was like, wait a second, is this a student or an adult? They were dressed to impress, ready to get their jobs. So, it was great to have that event be so successful because it's, it's definitely needed. So, a lot of students are going to be earning some dollars this summer and beyond, which is great. Then, last night, I went to Brown's Point Elementary's PTA Family Reading Night. And at this event, there were, they had two wish trees going. They had an apple tree and a, some other kind of tree. I don't know. It, it wasn't no fruit on it, but instead of the fruit being bloomed, they were putting wishes on there, right? And then they raffled it off to students. It was a lot of people in there that night. Had the opportunity to serve as a celebrity reader, which was, okay?
Yes.
And it was funny because there were, young people had their little pillow pets, blankets, blow-up mattresses. I mean, you name it, and it was on the gym floor. And I got to read two books, Neck and Neck and Too Many Toys. And we had a little dialogue about having too many toys and giving toys away. So, it was overall exciting. I think the reason why Caitlin isn't here is because she was there as well. The daffodil princesses were in the building. Every time they hit the corner, kids, oh, ah, mommy, you're a real princess. It was, it was nice to experience the young people just be so excited about them bright yellow dresses. They, they looked amazing, and they read books, did arts and crafts, participated in the wish tree. It was overall a good night. I don't like working that late, but last night it was worth it. So, that's all I got for you.
Awesome. Fabulous. Can I sneak in with the life thing being put on the way? Because I want to just capitalize on your bringing up the daffodil princesses. And I attended the coronation, the daffodil coronation ceremony, and we actually had five, we were, our five comprehensive high schools were represented by their princesses. And Aisha Ali from Foss, Caitlin Lee from Stadium, who's our rep, board rep, one of our board reps, Aisha Hassan from Lincoln, Thanh Ha from Mount Tahoma, and Andrea Galvin from Silas. And I want to tell you, these women were impressive. They each gave a speech, a one-minute speech, and then they had to answer a question that was, they were unprepared for, and they had poise and grace and commitment. And it was really uplifting. It was a long night, but it was a wonderful night. And, and at the end, they crowned the queen from the 24 of the princesses from each of the high schools that, that enter. And the queen this year is Queen Clara from Curtis High School. And there, everyone was very excited about all of that. And then, as you know, what happens is then the queen and her court, the princesses go out and do service and, and good in the community. And so Caitlin, representing, you know, Stadium, and Aisha from Foss, and Aisha from Lincoln, and Thanh Ha from Mount Tahoma, and Andrea from Silas are out there every day putting a, stimulating the community and, and encouraging young, young students to, to step up and be the best they can be. And I just want to say, I was impressed with them, and thank you to all the people that made it happen at each of the high schools and all the other kids that tried out. And congratulations to each and every one of them. So, that was, I just wanted to add that since we were talking about the daffodil. And then, my other one thing that I wanted to say and was, I actually also went to the salmon release field day trip with, for Edison Elementary, which was friggin' amazing. I mean, it really was. It was at the Foss Waterway Seaport Works, has been working with the school district. And I think there were 11 or 14, I can't remember the exact number, of elementary schools that were given by the Puyallup Tribe of Indians little eggs, salmon eggs, co-host salmon eggs. And they put them in a, in a, in a tank, and they've raised them, since they were eggs, into little fishies that are about this big. And this was the big release day where each elementary school had two hours, two and a half hours out at the creek, to Swan Creek, to do a whole bunch of water testing and see if the, if the water was healthy, and then to actually get their own salmon, which they could name, and then release. And it was just magical watching these kids and watching them do the science experiments. There were four different places that they, you know, tables that they would go to. And this was out at the creek, and it was a, it was a bit of a cold day, but it was, everybody was laughing and having a great time. And I just want to thank all those that made this happen. I just went to one elementary class. It was, this went on for a four or five days, morning group and an afternoon group. So, you can imagine how much it took for the volunteers to be there all day doing nature conversations. So, these are the kinds of lessons that I think transform in the way our kids feel about what they learn and how that relates to their world that they live in. And, and I will say this, I wasn't going to tell you this, but I, I'm going to. At the end, there were two little fishies left, and so I was asked to name them and release them. So, I named them Josh and Carla, and I released Josh and Carla into the river and wished them well as they went off to do their fishy salmon thing. So, there you go.
And I'm supposed to follow?
What? Sorry.
There was a, there's so many, thank you, Director Bronbright, for that honor. So many different partners and different levels. And thank you to the Puyallup Tribe of Indians, the Foss Seaport Waterway, Miss Angie Neville, and Teaching for Learning has really been a leader behind the scenes. The Department of Ecology, Metro Park, Sammy, there are so many different folks in this. And so, it is truly a wonderful opportunity for a group of students that may never be able to see that. And, and the Swan Creek is, is a critical salmon run. And so, we continue to try to find ways to, to work together to bring real relevant opportunities to kids from all across the city. So, we haven't arrived, but we're, we're committed to keep on trying.
Well, I definitely didn't name to Fish After You or Carla, so that did not happen since our last meeting. So, I'll just echo what Chelsea said about the NSBA conference and also Elizabeth. I think it's, it's really grounding and helps center the work that we're doing by being with directors, school directors from other parts of the country, and just understanding the similarities and the different challenges. So, I, I just, and also, there's usually a pretty large contingency of our Wazda colleagues, so it's always great to be with them. And also, you know, just advocating and being in conversation, I find is, you often will find me during a conference out in the hall having conversations rather than in sessions, because sometimes that's your session. And then, I also, so Director Stroger and I attended the Job Fair yesterday. And then I also, so Director Stroger and I attended the Job Fair yesterday, which was amazing. I drug my kid with me. And it was so cool to see families getting out of their cars. I also drove around for 10 minutes or more trying to park, which made me excited. But to see kids, students show up with their folders, and they were like dressed, and they were just like, it was, you could tell that there was a level of real excitement and energy. And just the opportunity, it was, it was really inspiring to see, see the whole event. And we're very excited, I believe I can speak for both of us, to see where it's going to be next time because it definitely needs a bigger space. And it was, it was amazing to see all of the partners and different companies and corporations there, just, just really, really cool. And I, we didn't realize until we heard like the call from Mount Tahoma students to get on their bus. We were like, wait, what? You bust kids in for this? So like, just the level of detail and planning that went into this event, I know, took a large team of people and community members, and it was really exciting. So huge congratulations to all. And I know there's a long list of people that were involved in that event. And thanks to the People's System, or People's Community Center, that's just, I always appreciate going there for events. And then I did start my morning yesterday with Elizabeth and Deputy Mayor Ushka at Galt. I was not allowed to bring sparklers out of excitement, but we did get to see the beginnings of the demolition of Galt, which was just, felt really exciting for next possibility and opportunity. So, so yesterday was full and really awesome, and we've got some fun things next week. The Wazda Director Area, Pierce County, I don't know, dinner gathering meeting, all of it, probably all of it. So it'll be good to, after post-session, to be with other school board directors within the county to just kind of be in conversation and talk about what's next. And what else? I also was at the daffodil coronation. I didn't tell you I was hiding in the back. And it was really impressive. I mean, every student that spoke was extremely impressive. And it was, I just really appreciated all of our students that participated in that and the stories they shared and the pieces of, there was a theme of resiliency and overcoming the impacts of COVID and mental health. And so I really just appreciated the honesty and vulnerability of the princesses in all of their stories. So, and I just want to say something on more of a personal note. Part of my professional life is to track national or policy through state policy in other states regarding LGBTQ issues, specifically transgender youth and LGBTQ youth. And to say that it's been grueling is quite an understatement. And to, I think that when we, we don't always, when, when it's not in our backyard, there are issues, they're not issues that we necessarily pay attention to individually or even as a community if it's not like in your face and you're directly dealing with it. And what I will say is that the, the rhetoric around parents like myself, people like myself, my own child, and those who support LGBTQ youth and families, the rhetoric is dangerous. It's hostile. And it's, I, my ask and my hope is that anyone, if you are, if you witnessed here, any anti-LGBTQ verbiage, I know it happens in our community. I know our, we have, we have a large number of LGBTQ students in our district. And I just, just because this legislation is happening outside of our state borders does not mean it's not impacting people in our state and in our own community. And so I just, it is really hard to read, read about such intentional harmful lies being told about LGBTQ people. And so, and Tacoma has a long history of being inclusive and advocating for LGBTQ people regardless of age. And so I hope that, I just think that if you know anyone within the community, check in on them, see if they're okay. Let them know that you recognize that there's a whole lot going on out there in the world that is specifically targeting them and people like them. So I just felt it was important to just acknowledge that because I talked to a lot of families locally who are just struggling with how to process what's happening in, across our country. That seems counter to who I believe we are as people.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Well, now I have to follow that. So there, payback. So anybody have any other comments or questions or things they want to share? All right. Well, next is item eight, seems to have skipped to 17, should be 17. Announcement of regular board meetings, April 21st, 2022, 6 o'clock. We'll see you here for the study session. That'll be really exciting. And April, and we're going to be talking about equity and the work that Superintendent Santorno has been doing this past year to move our equity policies and implementation forward. And then that'll be part of it. And then after that's done, the board is going to follow up on our retreat that we had last month.
February.
February.
I don't know.
I don't know where the time went, but anyway. So the last board retreat, which was a few weeks ago, which was on equity and our equity policy. And so we're going to have the conversation here, what Superintendent on special assignment Santorno has been doing for the past year and where we're planning to go. And then we will take it to the policy level and look at our policy and dive deep into that. So it should be an interesting and exciting conversation. Then April 28th is a regular business meeting, 6:00 PM, and then again, May 12th, another business meeting. So that is, is it unless somebody has anything else for the good of the order? Nope, we are adjourned.
Go Aves.